Welcome to our second Town Hall meeting of the fall semester. And I'm really excited to be here to talk about the first 90 days and let you know that the college has finished the fall strong. And I just want to share, before we get into our divisional updates, what are some of the activities that I have been undertaking since September 1st? And also, let me just say, it has been an absolute pleasure to serve all of you, our students, and this college over this past time period and through this transitional phase. And I want to thank each and every one of you, both those in the room here and our friends that are joining us virtually and unable to join us, for the support that you have shown me over these past few months. So, 90 days, they have been busy. What have I been doing? I have spent a lot of time, and I want to acknowledge our Chief of Staff, Amy Kemp, for us not missing a beat. We have Vice President Rich Sullivan for preparation. We came right into the budget. We've had some presentations throughout the fall semester on the budget and that process, so I will not bore you further with the details of that. But the budget has been delivered. So, over the course of this timeframe, I have met with Governor McKee. I met just this week with the Senate President, Ruggiero. I have met with several legislators, and we have more on the schedule for next week. Last Monday night, a week ago, we hosted our very first open house at the estate for our elected representatives, local representatives within the state. It was very well attended, including Speaker Shikachi and Governor McKee, as well as several representatives and senators. I can tell you without exception, their support of us is unquestionable. Their recognition of the contribution that the Community College of Rhode Island plays within the state's workforce and academic setting is also unquestionable. So, this was a very, very good night. And the house looks beautiful. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get further into the meeting. But everyone was very pleased with meeting all of the administrative team. And we made some great connections because the next step in this budget process now will be that Governor McKee releases his budget at the end of January. Beginning of February, he will deliver that publicly at a State of the State, which many of us have participated in, where we will know exactly what got included and what did not get included. For just an update, we, of course, want at least a current service level. We did ask for two big items to be funded, and that is expanded early college as well as CCRI Advantage. We understand that this will be determined on competing priorities and available revenue resources. Once that State of the State has completed, I will then embark on the committee presentations at both the House and the Senate. And we may be calling upon you to come and support us as we make that trip. And then finally, the legislature votes on a final budget that must be voted on by June 30th. So, it can go that late. I have been here. When it's going beyond that, it's very rare. Let me also say that on the opening day ceremonies that we had, it seems like yesterday, but it certainly has flown by. I did ask the college community to commit to three things. I asked that we say yes. I asked that we get comfortable with uncomfortable and that we continue to fearlessly advocate on behalf of our students. We have always done that, and we just need to continue to do it. So, I am really happy to share with you some of the say yes. Let me start off with the first fresh say yes and acknowledge and welcome Chief Hopkins. So, thank you, Joe. Chief Hopkins, we are very fortunate. I had the pleasure and the honor of swearing him in as our permanent chief of campus police. And as you all know, Chief Hopkins was critical with us getting accreditation for our campus police force, which is only one of two academic police departments in the state that has that in, has employed and implemented, along with his team, his wonderful team, a community policing model so that we are ensuring the safety and well-being of everybody that comes onto the campus. Some others say yes. We've had faculty Beth Anich in the academic, and I know I don't want to overstep with my colleague, Vice President Allison Hanley. But thank you, Beth, for saying yes as our Dean of Learning Commons and Classroom Technology. And I know I know that you'll do a great job, and you've got a great team of people to work with. In addition to saying yes, we launched our first month of giving. And I want to acknowledge Matty Burke for taking the lead on this. This was in the month of November. I hope that this becomes an annual event that just becomes bigger and stronger each year. But I think we did pretty darn well for getting that idea actionable by November. So, we partnered with the Elijah Project, and the faculty and staff gave away 1,200 bags of fresh food and household items. Our student government, along with the tremendous support from our faculty and staff, collected several hundred pounds of food and was able to donate 50 food baskets for the holiday, along with gift cards. Our admissions team and support volunteers of staff and faculty hosted a holiday celebration in Kennedy Plaza last week. We had over 1,000 people. I think there were 1,300 prospective students. They came to Kennedy Plaza, they got hot chocolate, they had T-shirts, and we were promoting CCRI as a potential stop for them along their academic pathway. In October, we welcomed more than 900 people to our open house. That included 900 prospective students and their families. And finally, 60 of you donated more than 48 pints of blood, which potentially saves the lives of 144 people. I know that my colleague, Vice President Hanley, will go into more details on some accomplishments with grants and so forth within the academic affairs. But I did want to share these from a community perspective. I just am so proud of what we have been able to accomplish over the past several months. Now, getting comfortable with the uncomfortable. I want to publicly thank our faculty and administrators, both workforce and academic affairs. Tomorrow, we will have our first meeting with CUNY to talk about what might an Advantage program look like here at the Community College. I will not belabor this, but you've heard me talk about developmental education at the highest need level. Students needing all three: reading, writing, mathematics, and can we do it better? So, tomorrow, that journey begins. And I taught for many years, and one of the scariest things for an academic to do is to change the way you've been doing something because you feel it's solid, I'm getting material out. However, there are some better ways that we can support our students in a more, I think, current model. So, we will thank you to those who are stepping up and getting comfortable with being uncomfortable. Advocacy, I have received, this is a wonderful part of this job. I've received several letters from students, unsolicited, over the fall semester, acknowledging and highlighting the wonderful faculty that they are enjoying in their classrooms. I just got one the other day and had the opportunity to see the faculty member in the hallway on my way here and stop and thank for the work that he's doing. These are living examples of your response to the call to action. And I hope that we just keep this going. I also want to update you. I implemented faculty lunches this semester, and we're going to continue it into the fall. I've met with almost 40 faculty over these lunches. They're probably, not probably, they are the highlight of the week when they fall. Some of the topics that have come out of that, one of them was starfish. And I know that we've got a team working on how can we do a restart of that, make it more user-friendly, and that there's a good feedback loop. So, I will leave that to the experts, but I certainly carried that message forward. Secondly, transportation between our campuses. This is an issue that no matter what group I've been with, how do we get some transportation that moves between our campuses? I can tell you that I have a group meeting in the next week or so, well, not two weeks, I think it is next week, with some key leaders within the administration and looking at what are some options for us to implement some sort of a transportation system from campus to campus. And then, of course, we talked about academic things. We talked about the uncomfortable and so forth, including seven-week terms. And again, not stepping on my friends' toes, but you hear it from me. One of the concerns is, well, you know what if it doesn't work? And my response was, as it always is, we will continuously assess any changes we make. We will monitor through metrics that have collaboratively decided upon the effectiveness and the outcomes of these changes. And what I can also sit here and guarantee you, at least for my tenure, we will not ever continue to do something that is not proving to be positive and having successful outcomes. We will make changes. But with anything new, there has to be a time of adaptation, and we have to make sure that we are using research, evidence-based, talking to outside people who have also done some of this work, and making sure that you have the supports that you need. I will let my other colleagues, of course, talk about our gifts through advancement, some of the other changes over the 90 days. As I said, we appointed a new dean in terms of Learning Commons. This is redesigning that whole area, and I couldn't have a better person leading that. We also made a decision to raise our HR department up to a vice president's level, and we would have executive presence at the table to oversee all the operations. When I came on board, and we have Sybil, who has done a phenomenal job with us. Thank you, Sybil, for all your work over the past several years. It seems like you've always been here, and I appreciate your help in so many ways. But when I came into office, you know, we really, our people account for more than 70%, almost 80% of our resources, the most precious resources other than our students. And it's important that we have a holistic and an executive-level perspective on that. So, I'm really pleased at how things are moving. We've got Sybil, we also decided our labor area needed to have some executive director leadership so that things move along in a timely manner. And I thank you both for saying yes. So, with this, I'm going to get the hook, I think. And I will have time, I hope, for some questions at the end. And I am going to turn it now over to Vice President Alix Ogden. Alix?
Thank you. Thank you, President Haskins. I'm going to, I can probably tell I have a little short thing going on. So, I'm going to try to project. We'll see how far I can get out there. So, this is kind of a long title for this work, but it's really important that all of that is in there. And I just want to say, because it is our people work, it's about how we bring people into our community, how we treat them when they're here, how we grow as employees at the college. So, it's a lot of words, but they're all important. And I just wanted to note that first. So, I just wanted to let people know, remind them of the fabulous, amazing, amazing staff in this department. We've kind of changed the hierarchy a little bit, and it's a little more kind of flat now. And we're kind of, we're trying to work in our lines of business. And obviously, there's cross-pollination everywhere. But this is how we're thinking about ourselves. And Peter, you're going to note that you're there now, right? I didn't have Peter's name on this at one point, and he noticed. But I really, they're terrific staff. Everyone's here and oriented about helping all of you do your work. I mean, that's the function of this office. We're here to support. And I really couldn't be prouder of the team that's there, that Sybil's built, and it's just terrific working with them. Thank you. So, I'm going to talk about some highlights. And Andrea and Raekwon, for those of you who've had new employees, you might be aware of this, but we have this really great new staff onboarding program that, how many cohorts have we had? One or two?
We have one in-person so far.
One in-person so far. So, you know, this includes everybody being welcomed with the video. And then, there's a combination of virtual and in-person onboarding for new employees. So, it involves the managers working directly with their employees to let them know about these resources. But what I particularly love is the fact that we have cohorts. And so, if you're joining the college, you're going to have a cohort with the people who joined around the same time that you did. And you're going to go through a process together to learn about the college and meet and get, so you're getting to know people right off the bat outside of your department. And so far, the feedback has been outstanding about the experience. So, I really want to say thank you because this is something, onboarding is something that we've struggled with, I think, since I've been here. And I think this provides such a great vision for both managers and their new employees coming in. So, thank you, Andrea and Raekwon. So, I don't know if Kara's here, but Kara, she's amazing, and she is here to help you. So, people might associate her with Title IX or discrimination complaints. I would say that she sees her role in a much more holistic way and a very activist way, which I very appreciate. So, she handles Title IX, non-discrimination ADA, Title VII. She's got a lot of what looks like federal compliance, but really, it's kind of people work that falls under her and for her to manage. So, one of the things that I know that she would want me to say is that she's available to do training. She'll train, she has a training set, and she can adapt it to your group. I think that she thinks kind of an hour is a good amount of time to at least get a good overview of it. But she's here to help, so please just reach out to her and schedule her to your team meetings or whatever. She's really excited to be doing that. She's going to, she's trying to figure out how to deepen that work with students, too. She really wants people to know that these are her support. So, one thing that comes with compliance is that there's an incredible amount of case management or complaint management. There are all sorts of requirements. She has, she is now about to use an online recording tool, which is going to make recording easier, but also management, so you're not missing any deadlines and things like that. So, we're really excited about that. And then, some of you who are maybe familiar with Title IX, we are waiting for a whole new set of guidance from the federal government that's going to compel us to change our Title IX policy. We'll do that with RIC and OPC. We did it before, I think it was three years ago now, when the last time significant guidance regulations came out. So, that is a big part of our work. Kara will tell you that she sees 2024 as the year of policies. So, you'll hear more about that. Thanks, Amy. Banner, the Position Control, the Banner Project, I still call it the Banner Project, but Peter calls it Position Description, excuse me. So, the RF1 process, I know that that can be a super frustrating process. And so, the goal with this is to use Banner to streamline our, how we pull together position descriptions and how we move them through approval queues. So, there's a ton of people working on this. A ton of people in HR and folks in IT and in finance. And I think, we're still tracking towards a February soft rollout, but it's going to be a totally different experience than what you're accustomed to. And it's really going to connect competencies to job tasks in a really, in a way that's very easy to see. And also, we'll probably inform when we get ready to redo our performance evaluations, we'll inform that as well. So, that's a super exciting project. So, just some other quick priorities. Always a focus on labor relations. Thank you to our labor partners who are in the room, which is all of you, really, and your leadership. We want to, we really want to continue to focus on a diverse, talented workforce by making sure we have diverse, talented pools of applicants. And our talent acquisition team is terrific and is very committed to that. As always, our partners in shared governance. Thank you, Nagla and her team. And I don't know Sandra, I don't know if Kara's here. But I just thank you so much for your partnership, and we'll continue to work. And as we move through the accreditation process and meeting visits. And then, this, I'm, there are other people in the room who are far more well-versed in this than I am. But we're needing to do an integration with the change in the ERP that the state has. And it's going to be a huge amount of kind of behind-the-scenes work and figuring out how we make that work. Because it's very, all I can say is, from what I've learned about it, it's really complicated. And there are people in here that are spending a lot of their weeks, a lot of time during their weeks on that project. I'm sorry, I'm definitely. So, anyway, that's it for me. And so, I
Associate Vice President, Bobby?
Great. Well, thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. So, for today's conversation, I'm going to focus on a look back over the past two quarters and then a look ahead to the next two quarters that will take us to our year-end. And I rode my bike to work yesterday to Providence campus and then appreciate the shuttle, Matty Burke, taking me to Warwick yesterday. But today, I've gone to all campuses this week because I drove through Newport this morning, coming down from the East Bay. So, if I'm coughing during this, I promise it's because of my biking yesterday. And I said to Alix this morning, it's just too cold to get out on my bike today. So, I also wanted, just as I mentioned, looking back and looking ahead, I want to look to the folks on the web platform and just acknowledge the folks that are back on my home campus, the Lincoln campus, and really look forward to being back there. Hopefully, it's easier to get to in the next couple of days. And just want to acknowledge the team that I get to work with there, LJ, Tess, Robin, Kim, Christina, Kristen, and really appreciate the work that that group has done and all the contributions that you'll see in today's presentation. So, we can move to the next slide, which captures three key wins over the past, over this semester or over the past quarter. And so, thrilled that you all heard and saw, President Haskins announced the $5 million Valley's commitment. And the wonderful bookend to that announcement is just this week, we convened the group, the Initiative Roundtable, across our colleagues that are implementing that partnership and so bringing that partnership to life. And so, in the room here, acknowledge that Dean Nauman is here, Dean Del Sesto, Chair Cochrane, and Crawford were there. And of course, our colleagues in workforce really appreciate the support that everyone, from Jenny to Jamie and everyone else on that team, that is helping us realize this landmark partnership, which I'll remind folks is the largest gift to this college in its history. It is likely to post as one of the top gifts to a community college in this country this year. And it nearly doubles the portfolio that is the CCRI Foundation. So, it was an honor to sit beside you, President Haskins, at many of those tables and just grateful for the team and the work that we did with President Hughes to bring that gift to life. And I know that this morning, our Chair of the Board, our President of the CCRI Foundation, Kim Barker, had a chance to speak about this partnership to an upcoming story that you'll all see next month. So, the good news just continues. And so, really honored to get to implement this work and work with that amazing group of folks that we gathered earlier this week. And I'll look forward to coming back to you all to update as we continue the partnership rollout. And just remember that that partnership anchors on workforce development and workforce pathway partnerships, new programs, certificate and degrees that we'll work on through our processes, and support for students by way of scholarships. And then, I just want to highlight two other key gifts that we received in the past quarter. And the second is the Lumina Foundation. And so, you all may remember that CCRI was named to the top 10 in their inaugural Community College Million Dollar Challenge. That's a big deal because other foundations and other funders are looking at who's made that list and who is Lumina funding. And so, that gift supported marketing to adult learners and increasing our enrollment of adult learners at the college. So, that was perfectly timed with our Fresh Start program and all of the work that's been happening in academic affairs, workforce development, and across our institution. So, a really, really exciting jumpstart. And during our site visit, our program officer came to this campus and said, wow, I'm so impressed with the external positioning that the college has put forward. And how do you just continue to amplify the spirit of who our students are and who our alumni are within our campus spaces? So, from Lincoln to Providence to Newport to here, they invested a second gift to support featuring students in a visual, students and alumni in a just enhanced visual way. So, you'll see more signs, posters, banners. We worked with Chair Mazin Adams and now Chair Parker on the extension of our gallery spaces. So, you'll see pop-up gallery spaces for student and community artwork. So, it's an exciting project. And I just want to specifically call out on, of course, we're partnering with Marketing Communications on this project, but really want to call out the contributions that our facilities team made to this project and to the yes of the gift. If Mike Arquette didn't help walk around and identify all of these spaces with Dave Snow's support, I don't think we would have landed at a yes from Lumina. So, just want to acknowledge the contribution that our facilities colleagues made to get that gift to yes. And then, continuing on that theme, in working with Matty Burke, our leader in Providence, and overseeing the dual enrollment early college and community programs, Carnegie was interested in seeing continued support of the work that you, Matty, have done with Accelerate. And so, the students that are participating in Accelerate are getting additional support through that program so that they continue to propel into this institution and all the other amazing institutions that they are continuing on to after completing, 100% of them completing high school. So, with that, we'll go to the next slide, which captures Q2. And I will highlight, I think I'll highlight just two items on this slide. So, lots of really great program action happening among volunteer programs and our alumni. And we continue the work that Robin Macduff does in awarding scholarships. Just thrilled to see these numbers continue to increase. And I will also just note for everyone here that the need continues to increase among our students. And so, more students coming to the institution also means more students are going also means more students are going to require, have aid that they will require to continue in their studies. And so we must continue to drive support of these programs. And the one program that I want to call out here is the Faculty Innovation Fund. We announced our second year of funding. And that was a program that President Costigan and I worked on at, I think it was two Raising Opportunities ago. And just very appreciative of the work that Kim Perry, on our foundation team, focused on impact, has done on driving this program forward. So eight of our colleagues, or I should say, seven of our colleagues and then a team, a group team of colleagues, received a $2,500 award to support innovation in and across classrooms at our college. And this year, I think we just closed the second cycle. Last week, we had probably about 20 applications from among our colleagues for five awards. So I just want to acknowledge the work that the review team does. And so among our colleagues, that is Professor Radcliffe and Dr. Towson, Heather Towson. Thank them for serving last year. This year, on the panel, the review panel, Professor Renza and Dr. Schmitz from Dental are on the review panel. And of course, I saw Professor Rogers, Dr. Rogers is here and has served both years on that review panel. So really looking forward to awarding a second year and announcing that in the early new year. And wow, in all of these scholarships and initiatives that I have the privilege of working on, it's exciting to see. We were able to bring the Student Emergency Relief Fund forward. And now we're supporting students regularly with that fund. The Comeback Scholarship that we launched in partnership with Dean Morrissey and Financial Aid and that team. And now we just run that program each year. So up next and on deck, I'm getting ahead of myself and we go to the next slide, is the Just in Time Scholarship. So that'll be the next campaign fund that we have, supporting students who are in, at a moment where it's make or break as to whether they're going to continue with their studies at the institution. And oftentimes, it takes just a nominal amount of funds. For anyone here who's thinking about your own giving, if you could give $500, that oftentimes means the difference of a student staying or having to stop and come back in the hope of coming back at a later date. So this slide, I can summarize in two quick sentences. We have a $3 million goal for, for this work. And we're halfway to the goal and we're about halfway here. So we're good. Let's go to the next slide. Great partnership with Delta Dental. This is a media spot that they have launched in market and so will be back.
At Delta Dental of Rhode Island, our mission is to see you smile. That's why we're committed to ensuring there are trained professionals entering the oral healthcare workforce in Rhode Island. The Delta Dental of Rhode Island Scholarship at CCRI supports dental hygiene students committed to working in our state after graduation. And we're helping to create a new oral surgery residency program at Rhode Island Hospital's Samuel Sinclair Dental Center. Delta Dental of Rhode Island stands behind the local community and behind smiles, just like yours.
So that's a 30-second media spot that's in our Rhode Island and Rhode Island region market. And just want to thank Professor Julie Galashoff for the work that she's done as the coordinator of our Strata Delta Dental Partnership Grants and Dr. Schmidt's Chair, who has been just so helpful in driving all this work forward. So with that, I'll go to what's up next. Look forward to Tribute to Talent commencement. We can't wait to host our alums and the broader community of support for this institution. And you all should have received your safe the date. The growth that we've seen year over year in Raising Opportunities has certainly been in part due to the increased participation of our colleagues across the college. So thank you all for purchasing tickets, purchasing tables, coming and raising your paddles and bringing family, friends and other supporters to support that work. So we'll be back at the Lincoln Campus. It'll be bigger and better than ever. And it's on Friday, April 26th. And with that, thank you so much, President Costigan.
Thank you. And now I will turn it over to Vice President Johnson of our Division of Workforce Partnerships for her update.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm meeting more people every day. I think the last time I did a presentation, I was on the job five days. I've now been here for 10 months. But for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jenny Johnson. I'm a proud CCRI alum and currently serving, excuse me, as the VP of the Division of Workforce Partnerships. So I'm just going to go into a brief sort of introduction about the division for folks that don't know. Our division serves over 20,000 Rhode Islanders annually. We have a budget of just over $10 million. We have 50-plus staff and over 250 faculty and instructors. We're a depart, we have four departments, or should I say five? For those of you who know the Department of One, that is Jamie Nash, who runs operations. But they are adult education, career services, transportation, education and workforce partnerships. And I just want to take a moment to say, preceding me, the, the division was re-titled, rebranded as the Division of Workforce Partnerships. And I think it's important to note that that has depth and breadth and meaning. So when you think about partnerships, of course, we are partnering externally with agencies and companies and leaders. Also, you know, what people might not know is the robust and quality internal partnerships we have with faculty and staff, with other divisions and other departments. So I'd be remiss if I just didn't say, if you are a part of the workforce division directly or if you had partnered, collaborated or worked with the division, could you just raise your hand, wave your hand up? So a lot of, a lot of work goes into this and I just, I thought it was really important to mention. And with that, I will get into briefly just highlighting our top five, although it feels like there's many more priorities. But I'll, I'll touch on these, these five. And again, there, there are more. There's a lot of amazing work going on in the division. So first and foremost, you've been hearing a lot over the past couple of years about our, you know, the very first in Rhode Island, this is a mouthful, global wind organization certified basic training facility that will, is in the homestretch of, of being built on our Lincoln campus. And we should be set to start training around the middle of January, early February. We will definitely share when we are ready to cut that ribbon and start bringing Rhode Islanders onto that facility to train for what we know is one of the fastest-growing industries and that is working on the blue economy in the states, in the country's offshore wind. Throughout, I'm just going to call out a couple of people and I'm going to miss someone through all of these priorities. But again, in the spirit of partnership, this, we would not have gotten this far in this project. It's been a labor of love. But I do want to call out Dave Snow from Facilities, who has just been relentless in getting this, getting this tower. You have to, if you haven't seen it, we'll send pictures. You have to see it. It really is something. Of course, Jamie Nash, who has probably lost a lot more hair throughout this process. And then Jim Thompson from our division, among many others. Secondly, we are still in the works of developing and designing additional employment pathways for justice-involved Rhode Islanders, Rhode Islanders who are impacted by the justice system. And want to just call out again, in partnership, Amy Kasserig, Kelly Morrissey, who have been integral partners with the Second Chance Pell Pilot and ensuring that, you know, our students that are currently, you know, within the walls of the Department of Corrections have the funding and the opportunities that they need to pursue career readiness and education so that when they do reintegrate into their communities, they have the support they need. So we are, you know, building off a couple of pockets of success, including which is our, we're going into our third cohort of the Fast Track to Advance Manufacturing in the women's facility that has been hugely successful. And we want to give our, our fellow Rhode Islanders more and more opportunities through different industries. So more to come about that. Third, we're going to be integrating career readiness into the student experience through our work-based learning and increasing drastically our, our job fair. So Liz and her team have been relentless. By fall '24, there was 70% of, of our, of our classes will, will have work-based learning component. And again, this could also not have been possible without our partners in Academic Affairs, faculty and staff, who have said yes to, to giving students this work-based learning experience that they know and we know, coupled with their academic experience, are just going to position them for really great success. Fourth, we are, as President Costigan mentioned, we are, through CCRI Advantage, we're planning pilot programming to support students who are in need of developmental ed courses. And I just want to, you know, very proudly say, this, this initiative is critical. It's, I believe, the absolute right thing to do to get our students to where they need to just accelerate into their academic courses. And what I think is additionally extraordinary about this initiative is it is, all three of the divisions of our college are collaborating on this. So our partners at Student Affairs, Academic Affairs and the Division of Workforce Partnerships. So it really is a diverse group of stakeholders coming together to make sure our students have everything they need to be successful. And last but not least, we want to scale the, the programming and the partnerships that we have through the Department of Workforce Partnerships, currently working across half of a dozen industries, 150 employers. And we want to do more and more and build off our successes. So too many specifics to name on that, but we want to just keep growing and building upon our successes. And I'll highlight, you can vote over it, Amy? To the next slide. I will, I will, won't say much more about this, but I think, again, this is, this is an example of what the division is able to do to answer a call and to say yes to what's, what's needed throughout the community, throughout industry. And so this just was important. I, I mentioned our internal partners on this, that are external collaborators. For the basic safety training is the Department of Labor and Training, Commerce, Rhode Island Building Futures, the Building Trades Council of Rhode Island and of course, funded by a grant, a Revolution Wind Grant through Orsted. Thank you. Another partnership that sort of is, I think, one of our flagship partnerships to show what's possible when you come together with an idea, you pilot it and you get to a point where you essentially scale it. And that is the General Dynamics Electric Boat Partnership, of which President Costigan was at the table from day one in 2017 when Electric Boat came to us and, and outlined their needs. We sat down at a table, we co-designed a curriculum that I'm proud to say now we have trained over Cody Fino. It's his favorite partnership. He updates that number almost by the day. So it stands now at 4,250-plus Rhode Island employees for Electric Boat. And I will read the trainings. You can certainly read those. But I will just say, again, an extraordinary element of this partnership, all of the training takes place at the Westerly Education Center. And we have over 150 instructors and teachers assistant. I don't know they, but it's above 90-something percent of our instructors are retired electric boat professionals who just had such an amazing career. They wanted to come back and pass on that passion and that skill development to our students. So it's a really beautiful thing to see in this, in this center. And in the spirit of increasing programming, we are in talks with currently some other large cities who really want to bring this training and this resource to their, to their residents. So you will undoubtedly hear more about us being able to give more Rhode Islanders access to a family-sustaining career through working in our, at growing defense industry. Thanks, Amy. And last but not least, before I pass it on to my colleague, as I mentioned, in fall 2024, more than 70% of our programs will have a work-based learning component. And so just wanted to note that that is no easy task. And Liz Giordano, again, I feel like I keep using this word, but it is what, it has been relentless in building relationships internally and externally to give our students as much as possible. And I think that, that pop-up, that, the picture, I don't know if you chose it intentionally, but I love the saying of, don't just get a job, build a career. And that is really at the nucleus of our division and what we think about every day is how can we give Rhode Islanders a path and the support they need to get on that path and achieve a family-sustaining, fulfilling career throughout the way. So you can see the, the different aspects of that. You'll be hearing more. I'm sure many of this room have already been tapped by Liz and you've said yes. And more of you might be hearing from her as we, you know, just continue along the path, just to close, you know, with what President Costigan mentioned as, you know, the third ask of us is fearlessly advocating for our students with a sense of urgency. And that comes with, with listening to them. And so everything that is happening here in this component is, is what our students need and are asking for. And then last slide, just wanted to call out the team. Of course, I'm here to answer any questions. This was quick. We, we love to talk about our work, but I wanted to also, you know, call out the entire leadership team, Jamie Nash, Cody Fino, Jamel Chinchilla, who I don't think is here. Oh, yes, she is. And Liz Giordano. Please, 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 if you have ideas, if you're hearing of a need, please reach out to one of us and we'd be happy to partner with you. So thank you. And I'll turn it over now to Vice President, Hannah.
Thank you very much, Jamie. First of all, happy holidays, upcoming and current, to everyone. And congratulations again to all of the faculty and staff who received service awards. I forget, it was over 2,000 years of.
2025.
Of performance and dedication on behalf of our students. So secondly, in addition, and we're going to talk about NIEC, but in addition to our upcoming NIEC accreditation visit, we have two programmatic evaluations that are underway. Both OT and massage therapy are submitting, as we speak, their reports in preparation for visits in the late spring. So where is Lauren? Lauren, are you here? Lauren Webb? Lauren's doing triple and quadruple duty. But we're going to have a lot to celebrate, I think, later in the spring term relative to those. Also, around accreditation, many of you know, because we've heard about it, that Kevin Crawford, he's such a quiet young man. But the cybersecurity program got their second five years of accreditation. So. And then we can turn to the NIEC slide. But before I go into some of the details related to that, I wanted to share with you a little bit about the recent December 5th to a annual meeting of NIEC in Boston. And we had a crew there, including the president, several of the people in this room. And one of the incredible highlights was that in the midst of a very impressive program, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of outstanding presentations that are very timely with respect to some of the things that my colleagues have shared, but also with some overall strategic activities that we're engaged in. Our own Matty Burke was on a panel, so let's give up. I'm always particularly pleased with and thrilled to know not only about and hear more about Matty's current work, but the title was "Rethinking High School Dual Enrollment as an Equitable On-ramp to College and Career Opportunity." Put your hand up if you did AP or dual enrollment or your children or grandchildren did. Okay. The point here is that in most likelihood, we all would have ended up going to college whether or not we did dual enrollment. And if you look back, I can reflect for my children and myself. And if you look back, I can reflect for my children and myself, it really could be described as a program for elite college-bound students. What is remarkable about what we have done, particularly in the Providence campus, but we're all engaged in this, it's not geographical, but is the whole notion, and we have two other panelists to tee this up along with Maddy, but I was so proud of this institution because this is a program that is targeted to students, many of them first generation, and a big piece, I know Maddy will be talking more about it at some later date and fleshing out some of the new details, but this is in-depth engagement, wraparound of the families, not just the students and the schools. So I think we're on the way to demonstrating what likely will be a national model in. It's an equity program, if you're looking at it in broad strokes. So congratulations, Maddy. It was wonderful to hear your presentation. Couple of other quick, one that I love because of the work we're trying to do together, Academic Affairs and Workforce, we're kind of pulling the two wonderful entities together. They've worked, long before Jenny and I were here. There were wonderful relationships, but we weren't doing that in a strategic way. And one of my other favorite presentations was Assuring Quality in Non-Credit Programming. Two, you could go to two out of six. It was really a big decision point. And I think Amy Kessaric was at this one also, maybe. But it was just so reinforcing in terms of the work that we are trying to do. And I got lots of contacts and people that certainly on the academic and workforce side, we're going to be reaching out because we can learn and we also have things to teach and offer our colleagues. So very timely. Why is it so important for us to be in this area? Because as we learned from a Washington update that you get always interspersed at these meetings, there is a movement that is very active involving congressional support to expand Pell to also cover some educational ed certificate programs on the non-credit side. So all the more reason for us to strengthen our involvement. And then the final piece that those in the academic side of the house will be hearing more for me about in the future, an excellent presentation on student mental health entitled, "We're All in It Together." And hearing about this common experience that many faculty and department chairs have shared with me, we need to do more, we need to be more educated about the needs and how we can be helped in terms of what is going on next. Relative to grants, quickly, there is a workforce grant that OPC funded. Carol Patton, I'll get sick of me calling her out, but we, along with Stacy, this was a landmark, huge OPC investment when we did the first cohort. But as Jamel knows, I've been touting this because at its heart, there was a bilingual component in trying to get more childcare and daycare and early childhood workers. And high intensity, smallish numbers, but the lessons learned are going to inform things going forward in the academic and non-academic side of the house. So let's look in detail a little bit about the N E C H update. Of course, always, my colleague Lauren is doing such an outstanding job. I came into this late. Your former VP, Costigan, was way ahead of this. I think many of the people in this room have been part of this process, but we're winding down the self-study piece. By the way, we were able to meet a couple of the team members, one of them we knew, one of them we did not, again, at the N E C H meeting, where you talk to people before they're coming to visit. So that was a nice sidebar. The visit is March 36th. Self-study will be shared with the visiting team in January. Let's give everybody a round of applause, because most of you I was so pleased to see at the Chairs Meeting that happened this week, many of you already have seen and used that data story, one-pager that Lauren researched and has circulated. And I encourage you, please, please, spend some time in your new met or your department with creating a data story. If you are in the elevator with somebody on our team, how can you talk about the ways that your division or department has used data? So more information forthcoming, including we'll have a second mock visit, which is our rehearsal, and was a lot of fun, but we learned a lot the first time we did it. New programs, quickly, because I know we're running out of time, we want to do Q and A. We're very pleased that our academic departments have been hard at work in preparation for the 2425 catalog. The programs you see up on the slide, Ecology and Environmental Biology, Terrestrial Certificate, and Aquatic Certificate, and the geog-- sorry, Geographic Information Systems Certificate, have been fully approved, and we thank these departments for their hard work in creating stackable credentials to benefit our students. So Note that the pipeline for more certificates is vigorous and active, and we're in the final stages of approval for several other stackable certificates in Communications and Media, a potential Journalism degree, and an A A in Africana Studies. So you'll be hearing more about that in the future. And my final slide, which is really my favorite, want to extend sincere congratulations to the faculty who were recently granted promotion and tenure. Tyler Boros and Justin Wang, they received tenure. And on the promotion side, congratulations to Lisa Murphy, Amy Parks, Bruno Sofianino, and Tyler and Justin also. So another round
I will turn things back to President Costigan, and I guess Amy for the Q and A.
Yes. Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone on the panel. Lots of updates. As you can see, we'll get ready to take some questions, but I do want to talk to what's looking ahead into spring. So we will plan at least two further town halls in the spring. N E C H is going to be very, very front and center as we prepare to welcome the team and get through all of that. If you haven't had a chance to read the self-study, please do so. Every single person should be very, very proud of where we've come in 10 years. It really made me feel very, very proud and happy. Also, the budget will be, will be doing that. I do want to update on one thing related to bookstore. We will be, first of all, thank you to every academic department and anyone else who orders books, and to the bookstore, Jeff Augustine and the team, Tom Feather, and they're, I think we're at 87% that had, as of last week, that had gotten their orders in. And we're at 78% plus that is using electronic resources, so making lots of good progress. I wish we were further ahead with, than we are with a physical bookstore plan, but, you know, due to unforeseen circumstances with contracts and procurement, which, thank you, Lisa, for everything you do every day, but it is, it is an arduous process if you're in, if you are in the procurement area. We basically had to start over from scratch, and we do expect to have a pop-up down in Newport the first two to three weeks of the school semester so that anybody needing help and the hard copies of textbooks can get directly shipped to the, to the student hall. So and finally, you know, I would be remiss if I did not talk about some reality. We've had lots to celebrate, but, you know, I can tell you, going around from state agencies that have also provided funding to us through workforce programs and self-work, just like ourselves, you know, our, the, the funds that have come through, through COVID relief funds, et cetera, you know, they, they are going away. They're dissipating. And we are going to have to come back to a, you know, pre sort of pandemic reality of what, what, what the resources are within the state. One agency that we deal with, you know, they came back to us and said, cut your, cut your prices by 50%, and actually it came in at 58% reduction. So there is going to be a reality that Vice President Sullivan and I will be, you know, keeping you up to date on and sharing information related to, but those, those funds that we had were very necessary are certainly dissipating. So I just wanted to end with that, which is kind of a sour note. No, here's a good note. Tomorrow, here's an open house down at the, at the president's estate. I hope that those of you that can join us will come down and have a cookie and a glass of cheer, and please bring your, your families and look at the grounds and a big shout-out to our facilities, our plant, and of course Some wonderful elves that went inside and decorated the house. It absolutely looks stunning, and I hope that we can all enjoy each other's company. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to questions. We can stop, where do we want to stop?
We do have one question from somebody online.
Sure.
I'm wondering, I see Dave Snow is sitting right here, and the question actually more direct
Fine.
Can you share an update on the construction of the student services area?
Absolutely. So we are, construction-wise, about 65% complete. If, I know no one is able to get down there, but at some point in January, you might, we may host some tours. But we're in the drywalling and individual office areas getting prepped right now, and we're coming, we're working on the ground floor from west to east, and then we'll be moving up to the first floor. We aren't on schedule for opening sometime in, in the 2025 timeframe, and we'll be providing more information on when that date is coming. But we're moving ahead, we're on budget, and we are on schedule.
Thank you. That's the only question we have so far online.
Very good. Any questions in the room? Oh, wow. Okay. Well, I, what is that?
Is there good cheer?
There is very good cheer. Very good cheer. I hope that you will all come by. For those that I don't get to see, I wish you a very joyous holiday season. Take some time, rest, relax, and enjoy your family, and let's be grateful for everything we have. So with that, I conclude this fall's Town Hall series and see you in spring.